To open the April Planning Commission meeting for Hamlin County. Our first order of business will be to approve the minutes of the March one meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I read the minutes. If you're to be correct, my motion is approved, minutes of March.
All right, Mr. Anderson has made a motion to approve the minutes. Do I have a second? Second, by Mr. Cudshaw. All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, minutes have been approved. Next order of business is the preliminary approval for the reserve at Cherokee Park Phase Two on Lowell Drive. There's four lots. Anyone here? For that?
Mr. Harrison checked in today while you were there and asked if the meeting was still on for a second.
Okay, we'll move that to the end of the meeting.
My motion is moved to the end.
Okay, I've got a motion to move that to the end of the meeting.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Hale. All those in favor?
Ah.
Okay, we'll move that to... down a little farther. So, the second item of business will be the drainage bond review and release for Whitworth Meadows off Fish Hasery Road. I guess we've got a... in your packet, we've got a letter from Matt Hatfield of Hatfield and Allen Associates, saying that he has reviewed Mr. Harrison's as-built drawings. And he agrees that it's been constructed as... it was... Construction has been completed as previously designed and approved, and he's recommending the bond release.
Still sixteen lots. Well, on his recommendation, my motion would release the bond.
Okay, we got a...
Second.
We got a motion by Mr. Anderson, and a second by Mr. Gray to release the bond. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of releasing the bond per the recommendations of the engineer? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we can release that bond. The third order of business is the site plan review for Kochs Tennessee out on Needmore Road. Josh, if you had a... know you had a chance to look at that, if you want to give us your thoughts.
Yeah, I need your pullback for a minute. Please walk in. This is a request from Clint Harrison, site plan approval for new building addition for... And I apologize if I murder this, Koch. Is it Koch or Cook?
I've heard it both ways. I'm not sure which way they pronounce it out there.
Kochs Tennessee, which is located at seventeen ten Needmore Road in the Whitesburg community. They're proposing a twelve thousand eight hundred forty square foot building addition, so it's two fourteen by sixty, to one of their two existing buildings that are currently on their twenty-two point nine acre parcel. This is a small addition to one of their two existing buildings at this location. And after review of the site plan, staff has determined that it meets all the requirements set forth in the Hamlin County Needmore Road.
Any one here? Clint, you want to?
Yes, sir. You guys switched on me. I didn't realize it.
Oh, you were waiting for us over in the small courtroom.
I didn't wait long. I apologize, but Coke is how they pronounce it.
Coke sounds...
Coke, Tennessee. They make cabinets out there on Needmore Road. So, they're doing that addition. They need more space. He said they could hire ten people right now if they could find them.
I've seen their signs.
So, they're ready to go, and we appreciate your taking a look at it and hoping to get started real soon.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, following these ready faces, I'd like to make some motion that we pursue for this.
Okay, I've got a motion from Mr. Cudshaw to approve the site plan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, a second by Mr. Hale. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, so... Site plan is approved.
Thank you. After they go through, did you all postpone the first one there?
Yes, and that's our next order of business.
Okay.
Maybe just...
I don't know the reserve.
Just put it to the end.
Okay, I just put it to the end and...
All right, thank you.
So, now, the next order of business is the reserve at Cherokee Lake, or Lake Cherokee Phase Two on Lowell Drive. Is there anyone here present for that?
It's me, too.
Phil Carholz, my client, he bought that tract of land out at the... on Lowell Drive. And I don't know if y'all went out there, but he's cleared it off, and so they're proposing a road for those four lots. Some were asking preliminary approval on that. I submitted a drainage letter, just basically saying, you know, we're at the lake. I've never put a detention basin right next to the lake in any projects around here in the way. Just feel like that's, you know, with a reservoir that large, we don't really need to be putting new reservoirs next to that. So, that's what my last letter basically said for stormwater, so... Appreciate y'all looking at that and hoping to get it going on in. Is there a bond in Subshades Route Two?
Ninety-six seventy-five.
That's the bond estimate for the...
Hills fans, Jams, Rip Rad.
Which... are these lots, one through four?
No, it's four through... seven through seven. We had originally proposed one, two, and three as a final block as a front Lowell Drive.
Okay.
But we didn't get the TBA stuff approved yet, so...
These are on a proposed private drive?
We did propose it that way. The owner has since understood that private drives are not...
Okay, that's what I was gonna break down.
I did the design as if it was a county road, but it... he was hoping to do that. Now, is there any... are there any regulations that would allow gates even on a public road? I think that's the key issue there.
A gated community?
Right, and, you know, they've come along... does the city record... do they have any regulations for gates that like that? You know, they've come a long way. Used to, you couldn't get trash picked up by our department, but they've come a long way on being able to access those things. So, is that maybe something we could bring back to propose that, even if it is a public road?
Once you're due it to the county, then it can be on gates.
Okay.
I'm curious, do you have any lots total at the end of the day?
Seven.
Seven at the end of the day, so a gated community for seven lots.
Well, the gate would only cover these four.
These four.
The other three front Lowell Drive.
Okay, and what about the eleven point three five acres? That's undevelopable.
It's not undevelopable. He could do something on it, but it's part of Lot Four.
Okay.
There's a fifty-foot right-of-way that TVA granted to that whole tract that allows access to that. It was eleven acres. So, he has access to it, but he can develop over there. It's just that, as part of this, we made it part of Lot Four.
Yes, it's part of Lot Four, according to your plans.
Now, Lot Four, you're saying that one, two, and three did side by the several? I was up there yesterday. I was looking at this. I thought Turners Landing was steep. This is steep.
There are sections of it pretty steep. I did Turners Landing, too, and I... it's still the steepest one I've ever done. I... there are parts of it that are, but, you know, there's a build... there are building sites on it. It just... we're gonna have to get creative, I guess.
So, if you... so, you're saying this is a possible case that Lot Four will have a right-of-way down this...
Not possible. It's there. The right-of-way from TVA is there.
Well, how high does that water get right there, that little small?
The ten eighty comes on both sides of that.
Yeah.
Both sides of that little channel there.
Right.
So, technically, it doesn't go... what the dam, is it about?
Ten seventy-five.
Ten seventy-five, so technically, it never gets up that high. They just reserve the rights up to that, but the water doesn't get up over there.
I'm sure you've checked it out. I'm sure you've checked it out.
Mr. Clint?
Mm-hmm.
The proposed county road, well, the cul-de-sac, have you heard anything then, right?
Yes, sir.
What's the pitch level for it? Pretty steep, but...
I don't... we actually moved it over. Originally, we shot it, and I can't remember what it was, but it was less than what's, I think, fifteen?
Fifteen is...
You could go up to fifteen, but I think it's more like twelve or thirteen.
So, it's fallen off. It's fallen out, no?
Yes.
Have you talked to Barry about it? Did he see it?
I sent it to Barry, and he had a couple of questions, but it was like that, the grain, different things like that, so... And it was proposed. We didn't know that it was gonna be tweaked or changed or anything, so...
We actually moved it over just because it is so steep there. We hoped, came way up close to the road and hoped the property was not so steep. The first three lots are still proposed. We just didn't get our septic approval finished before the meeting. So, we'd come back most likely next month for those first three lots with the septic approval. Hopefully, I mean, if we finish the road and get that other stuff, I don't know, but if you... We might try to do both of it next week.
What I'm looking at is this area, and you're proposing this cul-de-sac right here. Does it mean enough room for a doctor truck to turn around in that cul-de-sac?
Well, it meets the county regs for the cul-de-sac. I mean, what you see up there now is not gonna... wouldn't do that, but when we finish, it'll be a forty-foot radius, which is what the suburbs have.
Barry will have to sign off on that.
Mm-hmm.
You gotta...
You heard me too. It'll probably be forty.
You got a fifty on it?
Well, the fifty-foot is the right-of-way. The actual road, the paving inside there, the paving will be ten fifty inside there.
Forty, forty foot.
Eighty-foot diameter. Forty-foot radius on the actual road.
One more question.
Yeah.
Where are you gonna dump all this water on that road?
It goes out to the end.
The cul-de-sac.
Into the cul-de-sac, because there's that ditch down the property line between, I think, six and seven.
Six and seven, I can't see you.
Okay.
You know you've got a curve in it.
Yes, sir. Sure, just... Bayleton, you know, was the last one that we did, and I think it passed. You know, I think it went through there. Do you have anything else going down?
I don't think so. I thought it was been late.
Okay, so, you're asking for lots four through seven?
Yes, sir.
Today, not one, two, and three.
And just preliminary approval today. That gets us going for road construction, road control, just preliminary approval for four through seven, and then hopefully, the septic will be done. One through three can be next month.
And preliminary?
Preliminary today is.
That'll be my motion.
Please, let's give it preliminary. Can we hear what Josh has to say first?
Go ahead, Josh. Yeah, it meets, as far as a preliminary subdivision plot per county regulations, it meets everything. The only thing I will state, though, is per your regulations, the plot will have to come back before this board within sixty days. So, just keep that in mind, that two meetings from now, whether it's done or not, I have to come back. You'll have to make a motion, and then if you come back later, it needs more time, so...
For the final?
Yes, sir.
Got it.
All right, thanks, Josh.
And that's my motion. Still thinking.
Okay, I've got a motion for... please state your motion.
Approval of lots four through seven with the approval of the preliminary.
No, preliminary approval for lots four through seven.
Second.
Okay, and got a second by Mr. Hale. Is any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Second.
Been approved. Other business, we've got reviews on zoning violations. How many want to tell us what you've...
Basically, I have some violations, zoning violations that are, you know, basically, they don't wanna comply or they won't answer the letters or both. They're still open. They're still violations. And basically, what I'd like to do is send the violators a letter to have them come in front of this board and take that... try to take that step, just like we've done with, you know, a couple here in the past, and get the board's recommendation on what to do, or maybe have the board explain to them what they have to do and how much time they have to do it in, to see if they could, if the Planning Commission couldn't help us to get rid of some of these that are stagnant, so to speak.
Okay. We may have a little more clout.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Anybody have any thoughts or comments on that?
Mr. Gray, do you got anything to do with the plan check?
No, sir, it's not.
You spoke with him?
No, sir.
You make any difference?
No, sir.
There's a number of others just like that. So, do we want to... Do we want to leave that? Or do we want to bring them in front of us and... Do you want more?
Slap on the wrist.
One more slap on the wrist, or do we want to send it to the... To our attorney for a letter? Or what?
How about doing both? Send him a letter, run it through.
Well, if we... I mean, if the... In my opinion, I think we ought to do one and then the next one, but, you know, I'm thinking maybe that bringing them in here in front of the Planning Commissioners or the Board of Zoning Appeals or wherever it all is. That may be enough to...
Right.
To get them to do something.
That would be the appropriate step.
And if not, then we would, you know, if we can't get any satisfaction from that, then we would have to turn it over to the county attorney.
I'll agree.
Past history, where I've been doing this, the ones that we have rather in front of the board, we have had success. Some we've not, some we have had success.
Okay.
More than not.
Yes, sir.
Well, that would be the appropriate step, Mr. Chairman, is to try the board action.
Okay, does that require a motion? So, we'll just... you'll start putting a couple, couple every meeting on the agenda until we... Till we close around. Okay. Monthly four o'clock workshops? Do we want to start having workshops to... Teaching workshops to where we can get some education credits? Pardon me?
Or just to discuss the agenda items?
Our... We... before, in the past, we used to discuss the agenda items, so... Okay, so we'll do...
Will it be on the third education credit?
Well, discussing would not, but possibly, if we have, don't have much on the agenda, we would skip the... skip that part and have the planners learn us something.
And give you a heads up, we did just discover that they have put up a couple of the Tennessee APA videos from the past spring meeting. They're online now, and we can send the link to those for you all. It's thanks for PC and VZA members, and then I think there's a legal session also.
Yeah, would you watch the last month or so?
Same thing?
Probably, yeah. But they're... I think they're on YouTube now, or they're accessible to anybody now, so...
How can we, for our hours, how can we clarify that?
Yeah, could we take advantage of that in our...
I would imagine. I think that's part of the reason they put them up, given COVID restrictions and the lack of either people coming in to give training sessions or the ability to go out to seek some. I think this was, especially the couple we've found, I think they're pretty much targeting the education credits.
Okay.
Because I... the city, I guess we have our planning commission next week, the original planning commission, and where for our lunch session, we're gonna show them the things, I'm pretty sure, so...
Okay. Yeah, I think we'd be very interested in getting the link to that.
Yeah. If Steve hasn't sent it to you yet, I'll get it to you.
All right. Okay, the last thing, I don't know if anybody is aware of it, but our Peggy is going to retire here in the next couple of months, and Donna Massey has accepted the offer. I know Kyle has talked to her before she was offered the position. I was out of town at the time, so we just want to let you know that Donna did accept the offer and will fill Peggy's position starting first of next month, May one. And that's the last item on our agenda for the Planning Commission. Have a motion to adjourn?
All right.
I've got a motion by Edgar to adjourn. Have a second?
Second.
Second by Bill Hicks. All right. Planning Commission is adjourned, and we will now move on to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Welcome, everybody, to the April meeting of the Board of Zoning Appeals. Item of business is to approve the March one minutes. Anybody have a chance to review those?
Mr. Chairman and I have looked over the minutes, and they seem to be in proper order, so I make a motion we approve the minutes as they are.
All right, I've got a motion to approve as they are. About a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hicks. All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the minutes have been approved. Our second item of business is... is there anyone here representing the Hopkins property out on East Andrew Johnson Highway?
Yes, sir.
If you would come forward. I need to swear you in, so if you would, raise your right hand. Do you promise to tell the whole truth, and that's what the truth is, and help God?
Yes, sir.
All right. Would you tell us what's your... what you'd like to do out there?
That property is part of the Artburn estate, and they've had that property for a very long time there, and I'm trying to buy one of those properties currently from them. Problem is, it's on day one, and it's a substandard lot, and it's all attached to that farm which is across Andrew Johnson Highway.
So, this is the one lot on the railroad side of Andrew Johnson Highway?
There's two lots there, but I eventually would like to buy the other. Just funds don't allow that currently. And it's the lot touching the Seaton property, which is where Carr's East is located.
Okay. So, there... Both lots are less than our required minimum square footage.
Yes, sir.
So, you're asking to... for us to give a variance to approve the size of these lots?
Yes, sir.
So, they can be settled?
Yes, sir.
Have you got sewer up there?
There's septic.
There's septic, both of them.
If there's public sewer available, I'm not sure. I know public water is available down through there, but I don't think public sewer goes out there.
I thought it went to Whitesburg.
I've dealt with some on the other end of Whitesburg where we had a state sale, but I wasn't sure if that would...
I don't know if there's so many you could hook onto it, I believe. They were... I think there's just so many you could hook onto it.
We looked for a septic map and didn't find any in the state's files, TDA, and hadn't got any information on it. It's actually kind of hard to find anything recorded on that property. It's been there.
It's so old.
Yeah, it's so old. You know, the house was put there in nineteen forty, and that's about it.
Are you gonna... what are you gonna do with this lot? I mean, you gonna build a house? Tear the house down or remodel the house? I mean, what are you gonna do?
The house currently has a foundation issue. We plan to fix that, fix some cosmetic things on the front to improve some safety things, like the front porch has no handrails and things like that, and I intend to resell it. How when the electric company builders are building a thing? The... I was posting an electric right... I'm not sure.
They have septic.
I have septic. They were on septic.
But septic isn't right through there, so?
Not to my knowledge. I didn't research that much.
It may just be a force man coming from Whitesburg into town. That's what it was.
When was this survey?
There was a sewer pump station down Simpson Road, I do believe, on the north side, back that way, and I think that's where the lines are, is not on the actual highway.
Another question right here, man. When was this survey?
The original survey was after Miss Artburn died, I believe it was in twenty twenty by Billy Knight, and then I paid to have the line drawn and dividing those two properties in February.
Well, you knew this was a substandard lot, new survey, I didn't.
I believe he probably...
Well... He knows the regular...
But it's...
There's no way to make them any bigger unless you combine the two, and then you still have an issue with your...
If you hasn't combined, you have a good lot.
But two houses, right.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, two houses on one lot. And this...
Did he not tell you this was a substandard lot, from create two substandard lots?
He did, yes, and I said, well, we'll try to get it, see what we can do since they've been there so long. And that's part of the contract I have on the house. If I can't get it rezoned, then I don't intend to purchase them, as well as septic inspection and things like that.
So, we're looking at rezoning two, or are you looking at variance right now?
Just variance.
And your name is?
Tristan Hopkins.
Okay. I know, I was saying, I was just trying to get on record, because...
Well, this board has never deviated from her lot size.
Yes, sir.
That's one thing we do not do, is deviate from the lot size, and we do a lot of other things. If it's twenty-two thousand, it has to be twenty-two thousand.
Yes, sir. Even though the house has been there since nineteen forty, so I don't know what to do. Yeah, okay. So, what is your recommended action with having two houses on?
You recommend the lot?
Through the map.
To the map. That... we've set the standard, and we don't want to change from that standard.
Okay.
Right, Mr. Hicks?
What we say.
You know, twenty-two thousand, and that's something we've never deviated from.
Okay. So, they're not grandfathered since they've been there since the forties?
The grandfathered by one whole piece.
One whole... right, which I assume would be the issue.
So, they could send a by?
One.
Get away from the larger type of property, but just have the one lot over there with the twenty-two thousand square feet in two homes?
That's my opinion. You're welcome. Form your own. This board, since I've been here, has never deviated from lot size, right, King?
Correct.
Yeah.
That's my motion to deny.
Okay, I've got a motion to deny due to lack of lot size. Have a second? Or do I need a second? Second, again, a second by Mr. Hicks. All those in favor of denying it, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Hopkins?
It's okay, thank you.
If, uh, the next order of business is action investments, does anyone here?
Yes, sir.
Follow and state your name, please.
Chad Gess.
Okay, Mr. Gess, I need to swear you in, I swear in the zone, if you'd raise your right hand and repeat that to me. Promise to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God, have you? Alright. Thank you. Uh, are you back here due to lack of doing anything on the old trailer park that you purchased a number of months ago? Bring me up to date on it, and what your plans are, if you're planning on doing anything, or?
Yeah, we purchased the property to use it in the old market, it was, um, and we started working on that. We improved, improved the house that was on the property, completely remodeled it, uh, and then went in to replace the mobile homes that were there with, uh, and, uh, fixed them up, and then we were told that it had lost its grandfather clause, as you were all familiar with the last meeting. You all could not produce anything that says did. Uh, you said it had lost its grandfather clause, but it could not produce anything saying that it ever did. Uh, and then you voted at that time, at that, at that meeting, that it did remove it, um, and because it didn't mature overall. Uh, so from that point on, I've been doing some research about that, how something loses its grandfather clause, with, with no, no documentation showing that, uh, with active renters in place. So just been working on that a little bit, so been doing that work, we've been cleaning the property, Bush Allen, we've already been working on improving it, had been improved in years. You guys have let it go for years and years and years. Uh, it's been like that, and no wonder why they renovated it, because this community didn't do its job of taking care of that. And so we took it over, we already started cleaning, improving it, improving it without you guys even telling us to, and we plan to continue to do that. It's just trying to figure out how we're gonna do that now, because you guys threw a wrench in that, so, uh, at this time, like I said, working on understanding all the, all the ins and outs of this, losing its grandfather clause, and you guys voted out at the last meeting. Uh, and then, uh, working on, uh, people that get to salvage the units there, we've had, uh, three or four people that are interested. And of course, in that timeframe, we're dealing with COVID, and they're all dealing with that stuff, and can come out, can't come out, and then of course, wintertime or any season, and then back to everybody's super busy, cause everybody's buying, trying to mobile homes, or you can't get nobody to do anything, cause they're all busy shipping off anymore. So anybody that's around that stuff knows it, uh, so again, we're dealing with old mobile homes, if people want to rereverse that on the bottom realist, and we've got three or four people that are interested in taking them. And obviously, we'd like to have that done instead of just wasting stuff, so that's what we're, that's what we're working on, but, uh, what we were planning on doing through this process either way, was removing the old and bringing in, uh, units and then, uh, bringing that back up to par. But now we have to change that, so the other thing we're looking at is working on what's the best way to now deal with this property that I have, that you guys said it lost its, lost its, uh, ability to be a mobile home park, so we're working on how best to use that property in this community and how to develop that, so.
Okay, so... So I need some direction, some help. We have told him that it's a non-conforming trailer park, mobile home park, because it hasn't been tried to... Tina, the wife explained, telling me again why it was non-conforming.
The letter that I sent that explained that the mobile homes hadn't been lived in, and I think it had come also from the planner that it lost its, the non-conforming or grandfather status, and I think that we allowed the one mobile home to remain there, because it was the only one that was actually being lived in at the time. The rest of them were all, and I haven't been to the property, so I just have to go by with code enforcement and the pictures and everything. They were not livable to mobile homes, correct?
Now, you, you guys kept referring to the tax records, if I remember right, that's what you kept going to, saying that the tax records are showing one mobile home that was active.
Just one of them, and the rest of them weren't.
Trying to remember from over here, there was a tax records in there, was a survey that had been recorded that split that up, that said only one mobile home was habitable on that property, all others would be removed.
And they all said that they were...
I don't know anything about that.
It's not, you can gather the register deeds and pull it, I can get you a copy of it.
I mean, I got a copy of it, I don't remember saying all that, I can remember showing one.
It's a supplement that, I mean, I don't have it in front of me, but saying all the other mobile homes, in reference to what's habitable, will be removed by owner. Something that, Graham, I mean, I'm probably a little off from the wording.
Yeah, yeah, I can't remember saying anything like that. Maybe we had, because this said it didn't think the other septic record, and we had all the septic records for every single one, and showing all the septic systems for them.
Well, you had them, but there wasn't an individual septic system for each one, they were all in clusters, and just because that they were on paper didn't mean that they were actually usable. I mean, they could sit...
It would stay all state certified, but again, it's, like I said, I'm not trying to make an argument, you guys made your decision, and I'm not trying to go past that, like I said, we just gotta take time to figure out what I'm gonna do with it.
Well, I guess that's why, that's why we're here. What is, what are your future plans? Are you gonna remove the mobile homes from the property, cause it's in an R-one zone, which doesn't allow for the single lives? I mean, one single life...
You guys said I had to, so I, I planned that, I'm not gonna sit there and not comply, so just how I gotta do that, again. Like I said, trying not to just waste, people said they can come in, and we gotta get them to come in, or it's gonna take time.
So how much more time? What we gave you, what, six months, I think? And like you said, the weather has been perfect for the business of that.
The biggest thing with that is it's a huge cost, you gotta throw in a huge cost, and a company does, you know, and you let it go for this year, and this many years, and all of a sudden, you want me to clean it up in six months?
Right.
I mean, that's a little, that's a little bit, uh, you know, and you completely threw a monkey wrench in there, like I said, I don't think it was legally done. I've talked to quite a few people, and they said that what you guys did and how you did it was not exactly right. Uh, you didn't, you can produce any paperwork saying that, you say these things, but none of that was right. There was nothing in writing that you took that away from the people that owned it before, or myself when I bought it, so there was nothing in writing saying that that ever lost its grandfather. Again, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna throw a big stink, you know, I can do it, I'm gonna try to something about it, I'm gonna try to get with you guys, maybe something about it, put some double wides on it, cause the way that area is, it's not real high-end stuff. You guys required double wides, you can't do single wides, so I'm, I'm getting with the septic guy, getting over there, looking at the septic systems are there, and we can do three or four lots in there, put some nice double wides in there, I'll be coming to you guys with that, I plan to do something with it, but yes, we have to remove those, I've been talking to all the neighbors.
Yeah.
Got a guy bought a house above, he retired, real nice guy, he's fixing this place up, we're working together, so we're gonna make it, we're gonna make it nice, you know.
And sure, you, uh, six months would be enough?
More months.
Uh, probably not, just how busy things are. I mean, if you, if you, like I said, if you talk to any of these guys, they're all in these trailers out, I mean, they're, they can't keep up with the new, let alone any old stuff.
Oh, yeah.
How, how long do you want, Mr. Gess?
I would say a year, probably. Hopefully, things will slow down a little by that time, and they, these guys can get out of here, I mean, worst case scenario, if I gotta start demolishing them and taking them off, that's what I'll do, I mean, I just need to wait stuff, I'm not taking them, I'm not taking them free, I'm not charging them.
Well, you're gonna, you're gonna have to clean them up, get them out before you can do anything with it, anything?
Oh, yeah, exactly, before I start bringing else, anything else in there, absolutely, so I'm, I'm losing money this whole time, while there's sixty million money I'm losing, so it's, 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 or investment wise, I wanna get done.
I'll make a motion to give you six months, if that's not enough, come back, we'll talk to you again, so I'll take my motion.
We've got a motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hicks. All those in favor of granting him an additional six months, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. Thank you, thank you for coming in. The next item is Brad Senter for Mountain View Mobile Home Park, Shannon Little Mountain Road. If you would, I'll need to swear you in.
Okay.
You promise to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God?
So help me God.
Okay, thank you. What are you, what are your plans?
Well, I'm looking to possibly purchase, it's been, I grew up on Shannon's Little Mountain Road my whole life, and, uh, this, uh, mobile home park, uh, been up there, just been there for my whole life. Been nice for my whole life, uh, and just, uh, my parents live up there, and I just was know the owners, and, and I know they were looking to sell, so I wanted to... Uh, my thoughts were, why not put brand-new homes back in there, single-wide trailers, put back in the spots, there's, um, six on there now. Um, four not been lived in, uh, probably five-plus years, two have, uh, current renters in there now, so one, uh, twenty-plus years, the other's seven years. And so, um, uh, my pose was, I just wanna clean it up and, and take, take the, take the four off that aren't, uh, lived in now, put four that were on it, and, uh, clean it up, make it look better, and, uh, you know, do, do all four immediately, it wouldn't be stagnant, it would be immediate on the four, and then, uh, eventually all six.
Okay, Josh, have you, you got a chance to look at this, Lily?
Uh, yes, sir, so it's kind of similar to the one we just had, this property's on day one, which is our, which is your agriculture force, your district. So it was, was a legal non-conforming use for the years it was there, which had probably predated, um, zoning there anyway. Uh, so mobile home parks are only permitted in the R-two identity residential districts. Um, it, like I noted, had previously been a mobile home park, legal non-conforming, but the previous owner, as you just noted too, ceased renting out many of these mobile homes years ago, and talking with the county staff, the county's forest officer, many of these have fallen into a dilapidated state. So staff feels the owner willfully, by, abandoned this use, once they ceased renting them out, let them fall into this shape. And per the Hamilton County zoning ordinance, the owner had twelve months to reestablish it at any given time, and this has been years now. So any potential use of this land would have to meet the current zoning regulations, which do not permit mobile home parks. Um, any of the, any of those that have been used can continue to be used, but you wouldn't be able to reestablish the entire mobile home park.
So you, you could only do the two, you could do the two immediately?
Yes.
Not the four?
Yes.
Okay, um, there's, okay, so there's, there, not a part of this property, there's one more there that's already in use, so you're basically, I, I don't know that anybody's gonna do anything, but it'll just sit up there and look like, like it's looked for seven, you know, for, for the past fifty years, but that's, I guess, I don't argue, I, I ain't bought it yet, so I'm not even, I just would like to, I, I honestly, probably get an opportunity, but, you know, I don't, I, I don't, you know, to me, so what, what could you, I'm asking, what, what? I don't know, there's, there's no, I mean, it's kind of hard, cause we just got no, so I don't, I, I guess that's, uh, our reply. That is.
Well, I mean, it's up to the board to make the decision.
Uh, gotcha, so I mean, I, I don't know, with the, with the two being on there, working, operating, I don't own it, so I, it wasn't like, uh, that I would have fallen into any kind of dilapidated state, I just wanted to get better, cause it looks terrible up there, just to be quite honest with you, and I mean, it's a good investment opportunity, and, uh, that really needs some work anyway, and...
I mean, kind of, just, uh, given a comparable, well, maybe it's not, it's me, I mean, if you have a residential district, and you have a commercial building there, and the commercial building's fallen into disrepair, I mean, as soon as you go in there and start demoing it, it's gonna lose its grandfather status, kind of the same token. This is a commercial enterprise, this is a mobile home park, and once they fall into this shape, and you cease utilizing it as a mobile home park, when you start pulling the stuff out, you're abandoning, or once they quit renting them out, let it fall into a, you know, unlivable condition, they can abandon the use of that entire mobile home park.
Well, uh, is there, uh, is there any opportunity to rezon that?
Uh, we'd have to look into it, I don't have it in front of me, but I'm, I'm...
Mobile home parks have to have at least five acres, I mean acres.
Just four.
That's what, if you wanna go with a new mobile home park to rezon to R-two?
No matter the size or, no matter the...
It has to be, it has to be by acres.
Would you mind, Mr., is, uh, the subdivided property, you got quite a bit of road friends there on Shannon's Little Mountain Road, I bet you got quite a bit?
Oh, my, yeah, there's quite a bit.
You can subdivide it and then put mobile home in a lot.
You can only have the third one constitutes a mobile home park.
Third one, yeah.
Third one, yes, sir.
You could own two, let's say you subdivided the property, and, I don't know how many lots you can get, let's just say you can get six lots. You could own two of the mobile homes and rent it out, and then sell the third one, you just can't own three.
Three in a row.
You can't own three.
The third one constitutes a mobile home park.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
So you could have two, and then you could have the one that you sell to someone, and then have two more, the third one is what constitutes a mobile home park.
I don't, I don't know.
He's got plenty of road friends.
I got a lot, I got plenty of...
He's got plenty of road friends.
That's a lot, that's a lot. That'd be an ideal for you, that'd be the best way out.
Well, let me ask you this, there, there's also off of that property, off of the six, off the four acre, six, they have subdivided one, I was trying to negotiate to buy it as well. It's rented, everything's going on it, if I did that, if that one lot was one, and then I had the other two, does that make it three? Does that make sense, am I, is that what I'm saying?
You can't own three lots.
In a row, yeah.
Three lots, but I could do...
Contiguous.
Okay.
Okay, they touch, it's worth the one in the middle.
Mm-hmm.
Have somebody sell one, a lot, and you sell it to someone, and have two more.
Mm, okay, then.
Put the third in somebody else's place.
Gotcha. But...
Aren't you an almost lady or corporate or something, and do it that way, so, so possible, possible, um...
And it is in that one, so you can have the single ones there.
Okay, so, so you just need to come back and do the subdivision, subdivision?
You may wanna get with a surveyor and just talk to him about what he's planning, and he could probably lay it out better more yet.
As long as it's not three.
There you go.
That's easy, yeah.
You can move lots and lots, but remember, you just can't have more than one or two, right, and build a house. Or you're gonna do the third one.
Duplex, yeah.
Yeah.
There'd be a nice place for a duplex, it's a nice, my mother lives down below there, I've been through there several times.
Drew up my whole life there, and, yeah, if you and, uh, do the road, it'd be amazing, but it's just, uh...
Skip a bit, bit more mobiles.
No, 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 double wides except?
Yes.
So you can put a double wide right in there, and, you know...
You just have to remember, have to park for septic, I don't know what's existing.
Yeah, it was, it was like in the seventies, I think, or it was something, it seemed like it was very...
And if they've not been used in years, then, you know, they may have to go back and do a septic, and that's up to T D, that's up to the state, to tell whether or not you can have to stay existing ones.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey.
Hey, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Uh, next order of business is Michael Gray from twenty-six oh-five Brit Lane. Gray, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God?
I do.
Alright. Sixty days ago, we asked you to clean things up, and you said you would, and you haven't.
What happened, I took the word of the two guys, said they would clean it up, they started, got halfway, and looks like they just quit, but in the middle of all of that, my wife had to have emergency surgery, she wound up back in the hospital, and I've been taking care of her fifteen hours a day, just to keep her from the surgery. I thought I could do it on my own, I was wrong, I need help. Cause I cannot get to the house to check on it when I have to stay with her the whole day and weekend. I need someone to oversee it, or just take charge of getting it to zone.
And you don't have anybody?
No. I've called two cut knees two or three times. Neither one of them ever called me back. If anybody has any recommendations, I'll call them tomorrow. And just a, a detailed list of what exactly needs to be, uh, to code. Cause I don't really have a list. I just need the names of some good people that could do the job and do it right.
Well, we can't do that.
It's all my time right now is spending with my wife. And I can't, I can't get away from Newmarket to go check on the house every day or so. Cause it's a twenty-four hour job taking care of her.
Yeah.
Cause she's bad, I don't do, she depends on me for everything.
Do you see any time in the near future or the not too distant, do you see any, any time in the not too distant future where things are gonna change and you're gonna be able to?
It's hard to say, cause this week she's got three doctor's appointments. And last week she had two. Cause she's not going to, doctor visits for the stroke she had and it's for the surgery she had. She has doctor's appointments every month and the only way she can go is by ambulance.
Can you tell us how much time you need? Tell us how much time you need.
Be honest with you, I don't know. It just depends on who I could get and I could depend on them to do it on their own without me asking to go up and check on them, because I can't.
You go give us the time, Mr. Gray, we, we need the time, you know?
Well, I said sixty days the last time and I was wrong.
Give us a time.
Sixty days.
Sixty days? Sixty days? Do you think that's great? I mean, you.
Hopefully with her doctor, obvious doctor's appointment, it's out of the way.
Okay. I tell you what, Mr. Gray, we're gonna give you six months.
Six months?
As you clean it up.
You got it.
And then if you come back and it's not cleaned up, you're, you're under oath now. You said sixty days and we give you six months. So now we've, we've, we've helped you all we can.
Do you think anybody can give you some recommendations?
I have no idea. I have no idea. But, uh, we'll give you six months, that's all right?
All right.
So we.
You have my word.
That'll be my motion. So we have a motion to, to give him an additional six months to clean up the property. Would I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor of giving him an additional six months, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none?
Thank you.
Please get it done and let us know, thank you. Okay, there's no other business, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
So.
All right. Adjourn.